Welcome to the Planning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, May 22, 2024. I now call this meeting to order if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one ground, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Denise, can you call a roll?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Clark?
Aye, here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Here.
Commissioner Suthar?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Maloney, or Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
If I could get approval of the minutes from the January 2024, 2024 regular meeting, I now ask for approval of those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as written.
Second.
Thank you. And a second?
You gotta speak up into the mic, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call a roll?
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Suthar?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Now, the public hearing, agenda item A is rezoning for 728, 730, 734 Harding Avenue. I now open a public hearing. This is for the McDuffie property rezoning changed R2 medium-density residential. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as set forth verbatim. May we have a staff report from the city planner?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of Planning Commission. This evening, we are here to consider a request by the owner of the parcel located at the southwest corner of 8th Street and Harding Avenue to rezone the property from R1 low-density residential to R2 medium-density residential. The property that is the subject of this request, of this rezoning hearing, is located at the southeast corner, as I said, of North 8th Street and Harding Avenue in the northwesternly portion of Canyon City. Earlier this year, the property was divided into three lots, each lot approximately 7,520 square feet. Collectively, all three lots total 22,560 square feet. And as you can see from that image, the alley to the south is unobstructed. It was not a part of that plat. The alley is there, and all three of the lots that were created have alley access. The property was annexed into Canyon City as part of the Harding Second Edition in 1978. Harding Avenue represents the northerly edge of this annexation, and as a residential annexation, Harding Second Edition was zoned pretty much in its entirety, R1 low-density residential, and developed in a manner consistent with that zoning beginning in the 1980s. The subject property itself was formerly the location of one single-family residence, which fell into disrepair and was ultimately demolished in 2020. The property has a relatively uniform grade, only experiencing slight grade changes to the south, near the alley, and to the west, where there is a ditch. The subject property is zoned R1 low-density residential and is bordered to the east, south, and west by R1 zoning. There is one exception to this pattern. To the north of the subject property is the Skyview Villas Townhomes, an area which is zoned R2 medium-density residential, with a PUD overlay which allows party walls between the attached units to be located over lot lines. The applicant is seeking to construct duplex residential units on the three lots which compose the property. To do this, the R1 zoning would need to be changed to a zone density which allows for paired homes. R2 medium-density and R3 high-density residential both allow such uses, but the applicant has chosen to pursue R2 in order to be compatible with the townhome development zoning to the north. Section 17.10.040D of the city's Unified Development Code provides four criteria for rezoning requests. By code, in order for a rezoning effort to be considered, at least one of the four criteria must be met. The first criteria associated with evaluating rezoning requests is whether the rezoning is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. For this portion of Canyon City, the comprehensive plan designates this area as "single-family residential," the definition for which reads, "Single-family residential areas include neighborhoods that are primarily made up of single-family detached residential homes." This category also allows for lower-density single-family attached homes. The proposed use is consistent with this land use designation under the comprehensive plan. The third criteria associated with the evaluation of rezoning requests concerns whether the request itself is consistent with the purpose statement of the zone district as established in Chapter 1702 of the city's Unified Development Code. As stated in the UDC, the purpose of the R1 district is to provide and preserve areas for single-family homes and other necessary incompatible uses, such as accessory dwelling units. The R2 district purpose statement encompasses the applicant's request when it states that its purpose is to provide and preserve areas for single-family and duplex residential development. Thus, the rezoning request does meet the third criteria for rezoning. With two criteria met, the rezoning is eligible for consideration by Planning Commission and City Council. So, to summarize, as of today, staff has received no email or mail concerning this request. We have received one phone call concerning this request from a representative of the Skyview Villas Townhomes to the north. The nature of the inquiry dealt with whether manufactured homes or mobile homes could be built on-site. Mobile homes are prohibited in the R2 medium-density residential zone district. In fact, there are only two zone districts in Canyon City where mobile homes will be permitted by right, MH1, Mobile Home Park, and MH2, Mobile Home Subdivision. However, manufactured homes are permitted in every residential zone district in Canyon City, including the existing R1 zoning. It was pointed out to the representative that the applicant seeks the ability to rebuild duplex units on the property that is the subject of this rezoning request, not unlike the attached townhomes and Skyview Villas across the street. To summarize staff's findings, this rezoning proposal, when evaluated against the criteria for rezonings, is valid and can be considered for approval. Therefore, with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission cite the four findings of fact shown in Section 6 of the staff report as certification that the city has the jurisdiction to act on this request. And staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the rezoning request for the three McDuffie parcels addressed to 726, 730, and 734 Harding Avenue from R1 low-density residential to R2 medium-density residential. That would conclude staff's presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. I believe to speak on behalf of this project, we have the consultant, Matt Koch, from Cornerstone Land Surveying, and I believe Mrs. McDuffie is also here to speak about the project as well.
Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Are there any additional comments from commissioners before the public hearing is closed?
I have a question, or probably just a reference. Didn't that property have a manufactured home on it? Okay.
It actually had a crack house on it.
At one, yeah, at one point.
I was attempting to not, not be too literate when I described the property as having fallen into disrepair.
No, I understand that. I just had gone by that property enough times to realize that was a manufactured home. Thank you.
Commissioner Ladue, I wouldn't mind hearing from the property owners and to hear what their plans are and intentions are in moving forward and the timeframes.
If you would, step to the microphone. If you can state your name and property address for the record.
Great.
Hi, I'm Heather McDuffie. My address is 789 Cone, here in Canyon City. I inherited this property. Both my parents passed away this last summer, and they own three houses on Harding and this property. And so, what I, I really like the townhomes that are across the street, and I thought that that would be a great idea. It would give more places for people to rent. And that's when I went ahead and made the decision to subdivide it and to sell those so that they could be sold for the building of duplexes, just so that adds more places for, for people to rent in Canyon City.
So you're not, you're not planning on doing the construction of the duplexes? You're just creating options for other potential developers?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions for the property owner?
I have a question.
Go ahead and step to the microphone. Come on up. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, it's Jim Kilburn, 726 Skyview Court. I live across the street. I just want to know how high R2 can go.
R2 zoning is allowed to go up to 40 feet in height?
So that's generally?
That would be three stories ultimately, if, if they wanted to go that high. What we're seeing primarily right now, the market is for single-level homes, so we're not really seeing people building second floors.
I will say, the house on the corner directly across the street is a second-story house. But that's the only one, other than the loop around, I can't think of the street. There's a couple right on the other side of where he lives. But there's very few.
That would be the only real concern from our side, probably with that and the power lines, which I don't think you can do anything about. Those power lines for, that are around that property are constantly broken and constantly power shortages, and they need to be underground, but they're not.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Looks like there's another comment from the audience. Please step forward, name and address.
Thank you. My name is Karen Long, and I live at 730 Skyview Court. And we're very glad to hear that we will have some like neighbors. We love our townhomes on Skyview Court. They're, they're all single-level. North side of Skyview Court are two bedrooms. South side, where Jim and I live, in separate units, are three bedrooms. So, there's, there's four duplexes there for, for eight townhomes. And that, I couldn't agree with you more that that fell into great disrepair across the street, and, and we were very pleased when it was taken care of. And when Heather's father ultimately purchased the site, I know he had, he had great plans for it. So, we're, we're anxious to see something developed there.
I have another question for the property owner, and that is, since you're not the one that's developing the duplexes themselves, what, what is your motivation to change it from R1 to R2 if you're just going to be selling the lots?
And it's back to that I thought that it would be really, I inherited instantly other rentals, and I saw in those rentals that there needs to be rentals for everybody and where they have the ability to, maybe they don't want a house, maybe they want a duplex, that kind of thing, and making sure that we have those kind of options for our area, that it's not, you know, it wasn't going to be, you know, just a single house, that kind of thing, that it gives some options for Canyon City. Because I think the more options that we have, the better.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask, just a follow-up. So is your plan then to sell the property to?
So yes, all three lots are currently for sale.
Okay.
This is just the final component. I wanted to go ahead and get all of this ready so that whoever buys it, it's going to be easier for them to get going on getting it built, and so that they can go ahead and do what they need to do.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I, I have a similar story, maybe, and it's just my personal experience, and I can't, can't speak to everybody's. But I, my husband and I did purchase a property that had been on the market for a long time, and the property owner changed it to have a higher density of build, and that's when it got a renewed interest. And so, we were able to buy that property and were able to turn it into six units, where before there was zero, or actually, there was just one. And so, so that's one success story of where this turned out well, hopefully for Canyon City, for the same purposes.
Karen Long again. I will tell you that I moved here to Canyon City in 2016 specifically looking for the setting I'm in. I retired, I'm single. The duplex townhome situation was exactly what I was looking for. I had lived in the same kind of setting in Thornton, so, and I love that part of town. So, if that helps answer a question about, I, I think there's, I think there's a market for it.
Any other public comments, or, I guess, before we close the public meeting, Commissioner comments?
I have a question for Patrick.
Sure.
Has the fire district been, have they said anything like, by adding more density in the area with potential duplexes, that there need to be an extra fire hydrant or any other added infrastructure, sidewalks, or things like that, that this could trigger?
They, they have not. I suspect if they feel that a fire, that a fire hydrant is necessary, that will probably be a comment that they make when the applicant comes in, or when whoever buys the property comes in to pull building permits to construct. That'll probably be something they evaluate at that time.
Do you foresee any additional infrastructure that would probably be required to be put in to accommodate additional six units instead of?
According to the referrals that we have, water lines and sanitary sewer lines, electricity, dry utilities, all of that is present around the site right now. So it is development-ready. It's just a matter of what shape that development will take, and that's one of the things the applicant is doing here this evening.
Okay.
And to further add to that, if I remember correctly, there's a fire hydrant within 250 feet of the corner of that property.
So I do have a question. With the additional density, you know, item like parking does come up. I guess, if, if it were rezoned, and there's no current site plan, can you give a brief explanation of how that, I mean, if they could build basically based on current city code?
So, multifamily residential, this, this falls under the category multifamily residential when it comes to parking calculations. The requirement is 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit. It is not necessarily related to the number of bedrooms associated with a dwelling unit. So if they were to provide a driveway that can park two cars, if they have a garage that can fit two cars, they would meet the parking requirement for each unit on-site.
And is there any issue with, I guess, you know, because we'd have three curb cuts with the three lots. With duplex, are they limited to a single curb cut, or can that, and can you essentially double your curb cuts, or is it a wider?
Well, if you take a look at what they've got up at Skyline Villas, they actually have separate driveway curb cuts for each dwelling unit, even though some of them are attached. So you could potentially have six driveway curb cuts on Harding, or if they decided to go this route, you could have six driveway curb cuts onto the alley to the south. It just depends on how they orient the vehicular access.
I guess with, with the potential doubling of, of access, you know, potentially through that alley, I guess, what are the, what are the options for, you know, say paving that alley or requiring that to be paved?
That would be something Public Works will probably look at if and when we get a building permit that's requesting alley access for those lots. The alley right now is not really, I mean, it's, it's basically dry grass at this point, so I would imagine at a minimum, Public Works would probably want it converted into some sort of a gravel or, or non-grass surface. So we, we will take a look at that when we actually get building permits that are requesting alley access.
And is, is there ever public input as far as, you know, hey, this was upzoned? You know, so there is now with alley access planned, if that's the case, you know, perhaps the neighbors would like that, you know, the surface, I guess hardened, since there's going to be twice the traffic in that alley?
We can. Bear in mind that all of the lots to the south do not take direct alley access out there. They're, they're all front-accessed to the street, the next street south.
Right, and I think it, it's almost a, I guess, a, you know, condition. If you were going to, expecting three vehicles, or I guess, three units worth of vehicles, now you're looking at six. You sit in your backyard, there's, there's essentially twice the traffic on that alleyway, if, if that's the way it ends up being set up.
It could be. Bear in mind that residential uses don't generate a whole lot of exits and entrances to property. I, I think the, the national average is 10 trips per day per dwelling unit, and I would think this would probably be far lower than that.
Yeah, and I guess the, the point being, the, the change in zoning potentially doubles that, even, even though it's low.
It, it does, it does. And, and that will be something that Public Works will certainly take a look at when we get a building permit request.
Okay. And so that's strictly Public Works, there, after tonight, there is no more public?
After tonight, there is no, no more public process.
And is there anything Planning Commission can do to, I guess, put any kind of condition on change of zone for that?
You, you can impose a condition of approval if you'd like.
Okay. I have a question. How does this impact the recent signing by the governor of parking spot allotments? They just signed a new law that goes into effect in October, limiting the ability for cities to curtail parking.
I'm not really sure about that. I believe our city attorney is on the line with us here, and he may know more about what the, the law involves than I do. I have not been briefed on what impact this will have on us yet.
Yeah, the new, the new state law has to do with requiring minimums for multifamily dwellings. And so, it's changing the maximum minimum that you can require as a local government. And we're planning on writing a memo for the city that goes into more detail on that topic.
So that wouldn't apply to duplexes if it's a multi-unit?
I think it does, because it's multifamily, right?
No, it's typically, it has to be higher than that. We're typically talking about four units or more. So, single-family duplex and triplex typically won't be considered multifamily, but I would need to look at how they define it in the state law. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
And if you'd like, when we get that memo, I can ask Austin to come back and brief Planning Commission about this as well.
Yeah.
Patrick, could you speak to the concern about the height, the potential of three stories?
So by right, in the R2 district, the height that's allowed is 40 feet. By right, in the R1 zone, the height that's allowed is 40 feet. This would allow for three-story residences. We are not seeing a trend where people are wanting to go multi-story. Most of the new houses, and I, I speak from watching how homes go under construction in Dawson Ranch and in Four Mile Ranch, most of the larger, most of the homes that are going to be constructed are single floors. The buyers these days want ranch-style as opposed to, you know, vertically stacked dwelling units. So I don't know that it will be a problem that a home may go to 30, you know, three stories, 40 feet. I, I don't anticipate that's going to be a problem, but that is something that by right a builder could do under that zoning. It's also something that a builder could do by right under R1, the zoning that's there now.
Right, I think that's the strongest argument, is that it can happen today, as is. Okay.
Patrick? Patrick, real quickly, that's, you said three stories? Now, is that plus a basement? I mean, if somebody wanted to?
No, this, this would be a height that's measured from ground level. If someone has a basement that's below grade, that does not count in the height of the building.
Okay.
So you could have four stories?
So theoretically, you could have, yeah.
That's a lot of stairs to vacuum.
That's a lot, that's a lot of stuff.
They make some great elevators.
That's where the elevator goes in, and you'd be in good shape.
Oh, we have another speaker. Another public, public member? Name?
Hi, my name's Matt Koch. I'm with Cornerstone Land Surveying. Just a point of clarification, we took six lots and made three out of it. So basically, there were six lots there, and we combined them to create lots big enough for duplexes. So six houses, I guess theoretically could have been built on the smaller lots. So density-wise, there maybe wasn't as much impact before. I mean, it could be even, it could have been, you know, we've, we've created six possible living spaces when there was six living spaces before, so, just, just to clarify that, that there was already?
More affordable now to provide that?
Yeah, so.
But do you see the advantages of going from six single-family units to three duplexes?
Nowadays, yes. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of people looking at duplex lots, a lot of people investing in them. So it, I think that's the best option to actually, you know, more paying for your buck type of thing, so.
I think that helps to answer the question about parking, too. If there were six possible parking, you know, with the six units or six houses, you're not really adding, it's about the same.
Yes, I would point out that, you know, that six lots to three lots was done administratively, and that, that isn't the question before Planning Commission currently. It's the zone R1 to R2, which, which would in itself potentially double, I guess, density.
My point was that there were six to start with before it was done. So it, you have the equivalent amount of parking.
Right, and I guess our, our decision tonight, it, it is currently three lots based on administrative change. Our, our decision tonight is R1 to R2. That would potentially increase traffic.
I don't know if it would increase traffic, because it's the same number of families. It's just the configuration of the buildings.
But there's, as, today, there are three lots. There, there used to be six. It was administratively changed to three.
So now there could only be three?
If, if we were to not allow R2 zoning, it's three lots. It's three lots either way.
It would be three lots that would allow for three dwelling units. If it's changed to R2, it would be three lots that would allow for six dwelling units.
Yeah, and if I was the owner, and if this got denied, I'd go back and change it back to six lots again and sell those.
Any other public comments? At this time, I would close the public hearing. Any further discussion from Planning Commission? I would now call for a motion and a second to adopt the four findings of fact.
Chair, I move the Planning Commission adopt the four findings of fact contained in Section 6 of the staff report regarding the proposed rezoning request to change the existing zoning of the McDuffie property at 726/730/734 Harding Avenue.
And I will second that motion.
So there's been a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Denise, will you call a roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Suthar?
Aye.
All right, I will now call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to the City Council for the McDuffie property rezoning change to R2 medium-density residential. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move the Planning Commission recommend Council approve the rezoning request to change the zoning on the McDuffie property at 726, 730, 734 Harding Avenue to R2 medium-density residential.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Denise, will you call, real?
Commissioner Suthur?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And that concludes Agenda Item A. Agenda Item V is announcements and discussion items.
So, I do have one that I believe all of you are aware of. Our chairman, Mr. Smith, has tendered his resignation, not only from Planning Commission, but also from the Board of Adjustment. He is apparently relocating to Tennessee. So, I will leave it up to Planning Commission. Do you want to hold a vote this evening to elect a permanent chairman, or would you rather wait until Council appoints someone to fill the vacancy, and then all of you can vote together? It's entirely up to you.
I think it'd be nice if we waited, simply because we're leaving somebody out that potentially may want.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay. So, this, the notice that the resignation has been tendered will go to Council on June 3. I believe Council is going to instruct staff to publish advertisements to fill the vacancy. Hopefully, Council will get some candidates, and we'll probably have, if we have more than one candidate, interviews will be held before Council, probably sometime in July. I think they generally like the notices to run for several weeks. So, it'll probably, at that point, be maybe the July Planning Commission meeting before a vote will be held then.
Well, I guess my question, you don't mind filling in for the chairman?
Temporary basis is fine. I'm not here in July. That's the only potential issue.
You're going to get voted in.
What's that?
You're already the vice. You're not going to get...
I guess you'll need to state your preference one way or another before that meeting.
Right.
I would say, though, that, just an encouragement, that the last time that there was an opening for Planning Commission, there were some really, really good candidates, and it'd be awesome if they could come and be invited to interview again if they wish.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're waiting.
Okay, so we will wait on a vote for permanent chair.
Sounds good. Any other announcements or discussion items? Hearing none, I believe we are adjourned.